It's titled, "To Put One Brick Upon Another", by Philip Larkin. To put one brick upon another, add a third and then a fourth, leaves no time to wonder whether what you do has any worth. But to sit with bricks around you while the winds of heaven brawl, weighing what you should do or can do, leaves no doubt at all. You know, as a board member, as board members and as this school system, we build bricks around the walls to protect our students. We do that through our educational programs and through the services that we can afford. And today, we're going to be making some tough decisions, but I'm confident that we will make these choices through these difficult challenges. And I am honored to be doing this with you guys today. So with that, I would ask that we stand for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, I think we're back where we left off, aren't we, Mr. Walker? Budget update.
In our previous meeting last week, we went over the forecast and the budget, anticipating more reductions based on some of the information we learned out of the legislative session. And the request was to come back today and share the original budget committee reduction list that was completed for board discussion and review. Last fall was a year ago, I guess it was. So we bring that list back to you, share it with you, as to the original reduction ideas. And then on the other, the far column to the right is called status. I kind of just gave you some information about those. Some of them we have completed, we've done. Some of them you'll see that has to be negotiated through unions, et cetera, and just some other information. So that's kind of where I would think that we would start today and have the discussion, or y'all could have a discussion as to where we want to go from here.
All right. Do we have any recommendations?
By whom?
Of where we want to go from here.
Oh, well, I'm going to give you Mr. Webs.
Yeah, and then I'd like to go down to each item.
Would you like for me to do that right now?
Yeah.
All right. So the first, and these are in no particular order. They're just the way I transcribe them on here. Reduce deans to 196. We had a couple of deans that were outside of 196. That has been completed, that's done. One of the ideas was reduce every staff member by one day. That would net about $400,000. But that is partially contract obligated because of the unions that we have for employees. Reduce 251.
The very first, we should, we had to reduce deans at the pre-high, when it was CHS, LHS, and IEDS, he said that was already done?
That, that's days. Yeah, that's the, that suggests on the last page.
Right, this, right.
These were just the days. A couple of them had five extra days. So we, we have completed that. Reduce 251 day employees to 246. Once again, that is partially negotiated through contracts. I would have to go back to the unions for some of that.
But number two, did we do that?
No, that is not, that's not.
But if we did that, would we save $400,000?
Potentially, that's what it had to be.
Okay, every staff member, meaning which staff members?
Everyone included, including the board.
We, we don't.
Well, I just, I'd say that's what I included, everybody.
Okay, so how can you reduce a teacher by a day?
Well, they work 196 days. They would just lose one of their planning days. But that has to be negotiated through the contract.
It's not a contract, that's a state statute.
196 days, a state statute?
You think?
Not that I'm aware of.
No.
What's state statute?
Because other, other districts, teachers don't all want to pay 196.
What's state statute, or how many days teachers are paid?
I don't know.
You got one else?
No.
No.
It's not, that's just contract, local contract.
I was under the impression it was 196 days, and I thought that's kind of what we were locked into.
Yeah, I, I was not under that impression. This is the session that came out of the budget committee. We've vetted it through the process several times. And that question has never come up that I know of.
Six-day holidays got included in that contract a long time ago. Which improves, increases to 196.
All right, but you know what? I'm going to add that also. It's 180 days of instruction.
Correct.
Right.
And as far as I thought, I don't know why I was under this impression, that it was 196 days, contract days for teachers, of which it was up to us how we use those national days. Six of those days are paid holidays, right? Were four, six, right? 196 days, that's right. So there's 10 in service days?
Correct. Some before school and some are before.
I think 180 is what, what we're bound by is school day.
Children, good 180.
That's in statute.
Right.
I just, that, well, I found that in statute. I'm looking the other to see if.
Okay, I, I was under the impression that 196 was also in statute. So if I'm wrong about that, then that does make it something that we could do.
Absolutely.
Keep in mind, some of these employees, when this was across the board looked at, some of our employees only worked 180 days. So we'd have to do some, we'd have to figure out how that would work. Okay, the 251 day employees at 246. Once again, that is, some of it is contractually obligated.
We didn't do that?
No. If it doesn't have a completion on it, then we haven't done it.
Okay, so everything that's on this list hasn't, was never implemented?
Some of it wasn't. If it says completed, then we've done it. If not, we haven't.
Okay. Is it ongoing then? If it's just completed, are we doing it this year?
Correct, yes.
Or just did last year?
No, it's ongoing. Eliminate the swim program. That program still exists today for the elementary third graders. The mowing contracts. We've done a couple of things with the mowing contracts. Remember, we had the, the budget reduction this year from Duke Energy. We reduced it by $50,000. Last week, when I came to you, I proposed to reduce it again by an additional 30. And we would do a combination of the guys working the sports fields. We helped mow some of the, comp the local area of schools that are next to the high schools. So that's how we get to those numbers.
But we did do the, am I correct? We did the 50,000 already?
That's correct.
It's the 30 that would be remaining?
That's correct.
In the proposal. I just wanted to verify that.
Some extra days for media and ESE specialists. That was brought up. That hasn't been changed.
Is that, again, though, I wasn't sure, is that part of, does that need to be a bargaining issue?
Yes, probably so. Reduce secretarial staff at elementary. We have completed five of the 11 elementary schools by doing that. So we're continuing to work on that. We've been doing that as we get openings through attrition. As we get attrition.
I need to go back to the end of this question. Which, which item are you talking about?
I was talking about the 80,000, the eliminate the extra.
I don't know if that's a negotiated contract or not, because that's based on staffing.
Well, that was what, that's what I wasn't sure, because that was a question I wondered.
Because remember, we did that before, when people had 20 days. And then we did, we reduced their days, five days for the next nine years till they got back down to 196. So that, that's probably a staffing plan.
And that'll be something we could do without any negotiation?
We've done that before. We met with the union and gave them the heads up and everything, so.
Well, that's the other thing.
The only thing that goes to the table.
The other thing we talked about, though, was we add guidance calls a day.
What are your, what are your account?
We have guidance calls or days on here as well, further down the list.
We have the supplements.
Okay.
We did have days.
They do have days.
They're on the staff, but we didn't.
Yeah, 10 days. And I, I guess we get in this mindset that we have to have extra days before school and extra days after school. And rather than, keep adding them. Rather than say, okay, if you want to, if you need five days before or five days after school, then you take those five additional days off during the school year. And so that your 196 days is 196 days. You may not be the same 196 days as somebody else. You know, more flexible. I don't really look at that, especially.
We have some of our, like, WTI does that. Some of our schools do that. And I know that Citrus has flexed some of their days past those 10 extra days, because they made one of them throughout the summer. And I remember when we reduced the days, we met with principals and, and talked about who really required those extra days. The high schools felt like, I think they get 10 days, now maybe all, but some plan, how many days they get because of pre-registration and those kinds of, but it's all in statute. And they say, they're not blessed at the high.
Typically not, because the payroll calendar dictates what they work.
But sometimes if they want their summers covered, they'll ask them to take a few days off and go ahead and extend them to the summer past.
We've done that with guidance calls for a few years. They have somebody register students all summer. These kids enroll.
Right, so you know it's needed, but it's black system.
Okay, the next one was no step increase.
Before, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Back on the, on the secretarial.
Yeah.
A couple of these, I just, I wasn't sure. So like, reduce five of the 11. We've done, that's been, we've been doing through attrition.
And that has been completed. Five of the 11 has been completed at elementary.
Is, so the 275 is 11?
That's the total amount.
Okay, so just for argument's sake, that half of that we've recognized or realized?
Little less than.
Little less than half. So we still theoretically have, you know, 170 or so left on there.
But we've been accomplishing that through attrition, so as they come up, we make that.
And I guess just because we're having to make some tough decisions here, is, is that something we have to do through attrition? Is that something that, you know, if we're looking instructional versus support in a situation like that, is that the way we must do that through contract? Or is that?
Well.
And again, for the public, so that you understand, we're just needing to try and ask a lot of questions so that we have a bigger picture. None of these, I think at this point, any of us are trying to, to make decisions about, but just get some bigger pictures. I'm sorry, you can go ahead.
The next one was no step increase. We spent about a million dollars for that. Once again, that's contractually, partially of it, is contractually obligated to the union contracts.
And I don't know if it's mathematically, half of the, if you cut the step in half, because for anybody who's getting a payroll, you know, automatic payroll from the governor, would that be $500,000?
Well, I, I, well, it's probably not, not that easy. But that is certainly some thoughts for negotiation. And I hate to maybe talk about negotiations in here, but.
But that was something, I think, in our notes, that if it wasn't, if it was already negotiated, the monies sent down by the legislature for these, for the current increase in salary could not be used for a previously negotiated amount.
I don't remember reading that. I just remember that it says specifically, no bonuses. But with that, or, we have learned, has given us a lot of flexibility.
Yeah.
That we can actually go in and contractually, or, you know, negotiate with the unions on the amount of money we have.
Or we're going, we could. But if we negotiated a step already?
Well, the step's in the contract.
Okay.
But there may be some, some avenue that you could maybe combine some of that stuff.
So, so saying, it could be an offering, right? And just say, because of financial standards this year, we choose not to. That could be, but she's got to have the.
As far as the step increase in itself? It would have to be negotiated.
That would have to be negotiated before, would it?
Yes, it is in, it is in the contract. Unless the district's in the financial hardship. And you'd have to declare that. And there's some things you have to do, but we're not, we're not there. A total across the board, 1% pay reduction for all staff. Once again, there are some obligations in the contract. Eliminate instructional supplements to include ESE, guidance, psychologists, social workers, and ESOL. That is in the contract as well, so we have to negotiate that out. One of the suggestions was the high school reading coach. That was on the, on the budget committee. Condensed front office positions. This kind of goes back to the elementary. We've been doing that, and we've accomplished that at the high, at one high school. And then the four middle schools are doing that this year.
They are doing it?
Yes.
All right.
At the middle schools, correct. High school schedules. The budget committee said seven out of eight. Just know that we have recalculated the staffing formula. Where it's not seven out of eight, we just recalculated the staffing formula as we presented to you last week.
And, no, you showed 500,000 a year.
That's what we estimated it.
I think, though, in your other stuff, it had 500, it had 500, I know it's got it here. 531, I believe it was. And I, I'm.
I'm pretty sure it could have been.
And, and I don't, but I'm trying to count every dollar.
But what are you, what are you talking about?
Yeah, 531. Modify high school teaching schedule, which cuts 11 teachers. And this was, this was, and I use that term instead of the seven out of eight.
531,000, correct, by redoing the formula.
Hold on a second, hold on.
Go ahead.
So I had an interesting conversation with one of the high school teachers last night. And a couple of them are thinking about changing careers, about what they want to do. And I said, you know, have you considered working half a year? They looked at me, what do you mean? I said, well, you seem to have more of a need for teachers at the first half of the year than the second half of the year. What about if you just taught first term? You know what they said? Hmm, I never thought about that. And we offered that as an opportunity to teachers if they want to take on the second half of the year, almost like a throw-in sabbatical.
I know we've had teachers, two individuals possess one position where they kind of split it.
Yes.
I don't know that we've actually had a, so to speak, a 90-day contract, or whatever we want to call it, you know, for, for an individual. Not that I know of. Not to say that we could not think about that, but that.
Is there any reason? I would think that, because the accounting-wise, we could accomplish that. Or through the accounting system and any of that.
Yeah.
We could come up with, it would be a matter of just if we were open to it, then it makes sense.
Well, it would probably be a matter of losing benefits and all that sort of stuff. But I mean, it would be kind of an interesting idea.
High school would work.
At high school, it would work. It would work. And if people want, you know, if there's some, you know, even if we had five teachers out of the whole county, how much is that? $250,000, right?
I'm not sure women have that.
It actually happens.
What happens?
Right, it does.
They leave in the year?
Right, and then we don't fill them.
We typically do not fill January back in season, try to absorb them.
In the high school?
But do we replace them with subs, or do we kind of?
Depends what the subject is. I mean.
We can absorb them within the classes. We will. Sometimes we'll be able to add one teacher on planning. To add one section of math and absorb the other two, it's never the same answer.
Yeah, okay.
That's what we always, first thing, you try to just absorb them without replacing. And then if you have to, we try to add planning periods.
So on that note, you know, I'm a frequent complainer of the retirement times, that people choose to enact their retirement in that mid-year, midterm, midsemester, you know, in the middle of the month. I know we can't make people stay. As much as I would like to. But can we communicate a desire to have people either leave at the beginning or before the, you know, at the end of a term?
The natural breaks, right.
Yes, because otherwise, you do have to provide a substitute. And you can't plan a reshuffle. I mean, it really costs us a bit of a financial burden, so.
Is there a way to incentivize doing that? To incentivize, and some, is there something we have that we could do to incentivize that? So that it, you know, that it motivates someone to say, yeah, I'll work out that, the rest of that year? Because it does have a, it bears on us. On the other hand, if they want to do it, the worst part is, we got no, we have nothing to really.
Sometimes they need, because it's the end of the draft, and they have the boys. They're mandated that here's your, on our dead date, the end of the draft. So it all depends on people in draft, December, January, or the end of the school.
Or, or, for instance, like a social security issue. I mean, we do have those. I'm sure, and I wouldn't speak for the principal, but I'm just speculating, they have conversations with the individuals, you know, trying to help them make those decisions on when to retire.
See a few nodding heads back there.
But I mean, ultimately, the individual.
Begging may be involved at times.
Based on their own personal reasons. The other was the field trip budget we had presented. We also presented a couple of months ago, Mr. Sheffield, an idea about the pay-to-play to help offset some of the field, field trip budgets. So I just wanted to lift that out.
And I've said the one thing with that, too, that I don't, I think that it's very hard to have that conversation, so we also know what we're asking, the costs in addition to that of sports and extracurricular activities after schools. Because as we've noticed, and one of the comments that I heard was said is, well, absolutely. As parents, we wouldn't have a problem doing a pay-for-play if that's all we had to pay. But the reality is, is that we're asking them, in addition to that, to say, oh, by the way, you're still going to have to come up with $300.
To fundraise.
To fundraise. So if, until I think we have an idea of how much for each of those activities that we are requiring for fundraising, I have trouble having a conversation where we're saying, oh, it's $50 for this, but we're still going to ask them for $300. And that does seem to be a roundabout number that I hear from a lot of sports.
Yes.
So I want the public to understand, because one of the things that I heard from the public was, they, I think, had the wrongful assumption that that would negate those costs. And they are two different things. But if we're going to go to pay-for-play, we need to know what we are telling students their obligation is to play. Because right now, we still do have a pay-for-play. It's just that the county is offsetting, the district is offsetting a portion of that.
And in this, when you say field trip budget, who's that covering? Just the sports or?
No, no, that's everything. All the schools, no matter what their field trips are. I mean, at high schools, it is certainly athletics, but it could be the band, the drama. I mean, whatever trips.
Going visits.
The marine science station, or, yeah. Now, theme parks typically are not. They're paid for by the individuals, yeah. It's, it's the educational ones.
And does that include, like, I think each school gets a small budget for, like, those, I forget, there is like a cultural field trip, I think, though, a lot of times the schools.
Like, elementary typically has, like, the fifth grade trip to the middle school.
Right.
I kind of use that, marine science station and.
And that needs to continue.
The fifth grade trip to the middle school.
Absolutely.
And then one more, I forget what it was. But they all pretty much have the same ones. But the majority of it is certainly high schools to, to transport athletics.
You know, I'm wearing, a little bit off topic, but still on the topic. In Virginia, the schools are requiring each year, bringing school supplies for a student. I've never seen that before, to tune about $40 per child.
Happens all the time.
And I, I thought I'd misheard, but are you requiring? Yes, they bring it in, and they put it, like, in a common pot. It's not like their child has that. Then they buy for their own child. That's an incredible amount of money for them to go to school.
Oh, yes.
It's been happening.
It's not required. That's why they have the general pot to share in that. The parents can bring it in, and the teacher takes up all the pencils and distributes them during the course of the year. See, the other flip side of that is that some schools, if you send your child with three extra pencils, they don't get to keep them.
That's exactly why.
I think they're still doing that, aren't they?
And I, I can tell you my experience, because that's been something I've been tuned into. And so I can only speak for my kids, but having them in there right now, I've been blessed that a lot of the teachers will kind of say, these are items we're kind of asking for to be community items. So if you want to get them, you can go to the dollar store and get them type thing. And these are kind of items that have to do more that they're going to be your kids, or they're kind of more identified, so. And, and I usually have a conversation about that with my, my, because that's kind of been a pet peeve of mine. Generally, I've found most of the teachers, at least that I've been exposed to with our schools, that's, they don't do as much of the communal, other than the low costs, like inexpensive folders, crayons.
Crayonics.
Cleanx, yeah.
Okay, the next one was the media specials that we spoke about last week. After that is the reduction of one P teacher at the elementary school. Notwithstanding rural city, homeless assets, because they only have one. Suspend the marine science station is on there.
Do you want to use this as an opportunity to talk to us about any changes that funding with the marine science station that we received, or?
In reference to the grant they did.
Yeah, we're supposed to get some money, right?
About $90,000 plus or minus over a two-year span for professional development. Really all I know about it. Ernie's going to give us kind of a briefing on it to let us know what that's all about.
And I think that will cover.
It was not filed yet. I mean, they've made it to the next stage.
Correct.
Gives other information. They've been recommended for, and they have to provide additional information.
Did you get an email this morning? Yeah, I, that, that, my understanding is, I think it's gotten filed.
Okay, because there was a whole.
There was, yeah, but I think, that was a question that was out there. One of the things that encouraged me about that particular grant was that it also included transitioning to Common Core and transitioning their curriculum. And that's something we've talked about over the years that needs to be done. And it's actually then included in funding that, in the grant, too. And it included, I think, taking teachers, paying for teachers at the schools to help them develop pre and post courses there. So I just think we need to be cognizant that we, we did receive a grant there.
And we have encouraged Mr. Atkins and Mr. Olson about looking for grant opportunities.
Absolutely.
They have been diligently looking and trying, so.
And this is like, this is a national, this is a federal grant.
Yes, no. And I believe this is maybe like the third or fourth time he's put in for it. So they were very happy they finally have gotten some positive news.
It's not operational.
It's for professional development. Another idea from the budget committee was to combine the TOCs and the media specials at elementary and middle. And I just put some notes on the side, that your elementary TOCs are funded 50% of the reading plan and 50% of Title I. And at your middle school, they're 100% reading plan. That would be, we know where that money's coming from for those individuals.
So we eliminated that. We still have those funds that need to be allocated to some other ways.
Correct, yeah. That's why I wanted to make sure.
So I would just take that off, because that's an operational, really, I'd generally find, really.
I would agree with that. But I, and also because I think principals have spoken so loudly to us.
About the TOCs, yeah.
Next one was eliminate avid. Just had some notes on the side, just so you understood. Currently, it's funded through a couple of different sources. Some on the general fund, and the majority of it through race to the top. Keep in mind, race to the top funds go away. I think this is the last year, so I just want to let you know that.
So we've got them for right now, the race to the top? All right.
And again, just, you know, 150 is seven schools, correct? Because I think we have it now at every middle school and every high school.
Yes.
So it's, that 150 divides by that. And then, the question I think still that we've talked about is, and I'm not opposed to at some point having a conversation, but we would then have to go and develop something to replace that, because it is embedded into quite a few of the schools. There's going to be costs in doing some of that as well.
Yeah, and it pays for, you have your tutors come out of there. They all have tutors at the, at each location. You have professional development and curriculum that they, that's essentially what it pays for.
For the coming year, it is grant-funded, though?
Partially. Some of it is in the general fund, the majority of it's in the race to the top funds.
And then next to race to the top, those ways?
Right, then we have to fully fund it on the general fund. Another suggestion was eliminate SROs. I wouldn't suggest doing that, but it was on the budget committee, so I won't present it. Eliminate all supplements, that's about $1.1 million, and once again, we're contractually obligated for the majority of those, but not to say that we can't have the conversation and go back to, and talk to the unions about that.
There's been a lot of conversation, I think, among, and it's always not in my backyard or not my mind, or take theirs, but generally speaking, we've all, I think, talked about there needing to be a conversation with that. Is that progressing, or is there, is there an active conversation?
There is.
That's going on?
Karen?
Is there receptive to that? Because, again, the challenge is, is that who we often hear from is staff pointing at the other staff.
Yeah.
So the reality is, is we're a little bit in, in the sense that we can say, we, you know, that right now, but if, we can't come to bargaining, and if they're not gonna agree on what those are, we're not gonna get anywhere.
Yeah, I don't think it's gonna happen overnight. It's gonna be a series of meetings that you're gonna have to go through and bargain, it's gonna be, it's gonna take a while. I mean, anytime you go and try to bargain to reduce the pay, there's gonna be a lot of conversation to be had. But it is, it is being negotiated or spoken to, or, you know, have a conversation in the bargaining sessions right now.
So for this coming year, is there any dollar amount that could be even remotely considered?
I would think not. I think it's gonna take a...
That's, that's really...
...process.
And originally, the supplements were in place to encourage teachers to get more certifications in different areas, and sometimes now, that's required of the job, it's not a supplement. So how, how are they discussing the supplement, the idea of supplement?
I think we've just presented our ideas to them, really. We're waiting to hear back from those.
What they consider what's...
But Ms. Powers is correct, because it was, it was for either additional duties or in-need positions that we often had. And so when, now either that's in, or, you know, or required, the position required of that. There is fewer and fewer of those in-need positions that that's facilitating the need of that, and, you know, I understand the extra duty supplement easier than I do some of the others, so. But that is, and that's one where we, and I know it's not, we've all spoken strongly about it, but I think we have to keep saying, we're, tell us what we can start doing, let's, let's make those supplements, you know, and start reducing them.
The next one was the two-mile ridership. It was 500,000, 400 for elementary, 100 for secondary, and then the question was asked last week, what does one mile do for secondary? Approximately $17,000. So that was the answer to that question, and I think, Ms. Deutschman, you asked me that?
Yeah. Oh, I think the, on the budget recommendation from last week, what was the...
It was a secondary two-mile.
Yeah.
A hundred thousand. And then you asked me what it would be for the one mile.
Okay, thanks. So, a lot more kids live between, like, two miles and two and one.
Right. The next one was eliminate middle school sports. No, I'm sorry.
On that one, I can envision the bus going by, I mean, you have the right separate buses, so that's what you're saying, the high school bus wouldn't be there to stop if it was, if it was under two miles.
Correct.
And they would...
And provide transportation, whether it be walk, bike, car. Eliminate the middle school sports.
Which of those?
Well, at middle school, they have basketball, volleyball, football, track.
Golf.
Golf, tennis, so they have several of them.
So you have buses across the board.
Correct.
All sports.
Yeah. And that's pretty much your coaching supplements and your transportation costs, et cetera.
And that, that, in, you're talking about between schools, you're not talking about after school, like it was...
Not intermurals, just the actual sports.
Okay.
Yeah, the suggestion from the committee was eliminate all TOSES in middle school and elementary. Once again, I broke down the, the...
Didn't we just do that?
Well, the other one was a combination, combine TOSA and media, so this is just straight TOSA, so it was just one of the suggestions I wanted to present.
I think that's the same...
Essentially, it is, I think we've, you've kind of...
Yeah.
Wrote that one off, but I didn't wanna be remiss and leave it off the list. Reduce one guidance counselor at IMS and all, and the three high schools. Currently, we are proposing to reduce one guidance counselor at IMS and then one at Crest.
And the one at IMS is because of numbers being...
The four-day work week, I just put another, it's really not feasible. And then reduce deans at CHS, LHS, and IMS, and we're currently proposed to you that we would reduce one at LHS based on the staffing.
And there's four right now, right?
Three.
Four. Okay, I don't know why it's not four names.
For deans, there's, we're, we call them...
How many is there at Citrus? Three?
Two.
Okay. So we have four at La Canto, three at La Canto, two at Citrus, and two at Crest River?
Zero.
None.
Zero.
There was one.
There was.
He left and he replaced him with...
Okay.
He left out with two.
Crest River High School's numbers went way down, and so they warranted, and so now they've replaced that with an AP. Kind of a change.
All right.
So that was the list.
Okay.
As presented by the budget committee.
Thank you.
So interestingly, I did, I don't know why I didn't do this before, I took my little calculator on my phone and I added up $3,810,000 that are potential cuts that are controlled by contracts. So I think this could very well be an easy answer. We're asked to make difficult decisions to cut people's positions, to cut programs for kids, to do all this stuff, but we have $3.8 million at, with the ability to cut only 500,000, is that what we're looking for today, 500,000?
I presented to you a million, I don't know if we ever really, I think we kind of stopped at that one conversation with the media specialists, but...
Maybe we haven't done enough to engage our union in helping us to find these cuts. They have the ability to make changes to up to $3.8 million?
Could you detail out what ones they're talking about, because, if you give you some ramifications of some of that we can't do, maybe, or, you know...
But maybe we can do some of it.
Yeah, I understand, that's why...
And some of this may be redundant, but, you know, it was reduce the one day, reduce 251 employees to 246, eliminate the extra days for media, N E S T, I think you said that was negotiated. No step increase, 1% pay raise, eliminate instructional supplements, eliminate other sup, all supplements, I don't know if that was inclusive of them or not.
Well, they're included in that.
Okay. So even if you took away a million dollars of redundant, um, money, you still did okay.
Just so you know, on supplements, you got kind of two...
I understand.
Okay.
But here's, I guess, I guess maybe, I, I wish that we had looked at this a little bit more carefully as far as how much money actually is, can be cut or can be discussed through negotiations and that is, that is part of the contract. That is money that we say, from our point of view, is money that could be part of the budget reduction measures. It's a lot of money. So surely you would think that there would be some reasonable ways, maybe through a number of these things, by cutting all of them maybe a little, to come up with that billion dollars, that won't impact positions at schools, that won't impact programs for students, that won't impact the quality of education in our, in our school system. I mean, maybe we're asking our employees, what can you do to help? What can you do to help? What is your union willing to do to work with all of this problem? We work as a, as a team, not we make the decisions and you guys figure it out.
I mean, I agree very much with you, I know what Tom said about Brooke, Brooke too, and I was in the school where that happened, where there was a funding issue, and teachers came together and said, okay, we're sharing the problem. Please take this money and add it to what you need. And there's a really strong feeling, it's a weak feeling that happens. And I, I know there are many of you who've said that, who said, you know, take this, take that, because we want to be part of a team that solves this problem. So maybe that's how the opportunity should be given with those others who haven't thought about it, or who are thinking about it, have a voice, their opinion.
Or the student too firm against it, no, we're not gonna, we're not gonna, we're not gonna do anything. Well, okay, then don't come and complain when your position gets cut. Don't come and complain when your hours get, when, you know, you've lost your textbooks, or you lost your computer, or you lost your media specialist, or you lost your technology specialist, and you need them to develop your curriculum, you know? And I don't believe that our teachers are self-centered and are worried about, I think, a lot of these things in this list. I think that, I think if that was a choice, I think plenty of people would say, boy, I'd be happy to talk about, what is it we can do?
And they have said, and I agree with you, they want the best for the student, and if they see a way to be able to provide that best by having maybe a little bit of a cut or a change, or redoing the budget, then I think not, but be perfectly willing to do that. In the past, you've seen that happen in council, for, for the situation right now. And I do think that the teachers want to step forward and say, let us help. We were just informed the public, but the point of fact didn't pass, because we were asking for help. Please help us, we have a problem and issue, we need some, we need some help with this. And that is important, because we're all in the same boat.
Right, but you know what, but, but again, you know, we're asking the public to support our school system, so maybe the public, you know, for whatever reason, the public didn't either understand or didn't, or didn't choose to add to our budget, okay, fine. So we can't blame the public, that's the public's fault.
No, we still are all in it together, all of us have to find a solution.
But we, we are together as a group, and, you know, and I think that we probably need to give this problem of cutting our budget to the union to help us work out. I mean, how much, I mean, I know we, we can go into a negotiating session and talk about that behind closed doors, but how much have we really had any expectations that they would help us in providing solutions to this problem?
I don't know the answer to that. I mean, they were part of the budget committee, ma'am?
Are you on the negotiating team? Okay.
Yes. They were part of the budget committee, all staff members from support staff to instructional staff to administrators, so these were all suggestions from all staff across the board. But I have not been involved, and I know one of the conversations that we've had recently with the union was to start talking about supplements and the need to start looking at those areas. But I've never heard any feedback from a session that said that they were coming up with these ideas to help reduce the budget. I don't, in my opinion, this is only my opinion, I don't think that's the way they proceed in those negotiations.
It may not, but maybe it needs to be, maybe, maybe...
I don't disagree with you, I'm just saying that...
The expectation is, we're going to the table with you guys, and we need to reduce this budget by a million dollars. And you're holding $3.8 million in contract money that can be negotiated, let's start working on it, we're working on this together, let's see where we can go. A million dollars, or even a half million dollars, or three quarters of a million dollars, I don't think is an unfair expectation. I think it's reasonable, I think it allows the employees to have control over what they think they want to sacrifice, you know, out of the budget, or willing to help, or tell us. No way. I mean, I, I think we, we have to get to that point where we know where that line was standing, and I don't think we know that.
And it allows them to help their fellow teachers too.
I think, I think we, I think we're gonna have to do that if we're gonna...
We're going to recess.
But just a second now, we got principals in this audience, and I'm really concerned that you're here, not in your schools. Is there something that you want to tell us? Because otherwise, I, I know you're waiting for us to tell you something, but we don't know when we're going to have any answers, so I don't want to have you guys tied up sitting here, where maybe you need to be at your school's last call.
They were here only because if you all had questions about any of the staffing, but if you all feel comfortable with that, we can send them back to the school.
Now, here's the problem, though, and I, and that's why I thought maybe we were gonna go into executive session and then come back, because one of the things I think that we have to be realistic is, then we have to be realistic today, that if we were to, to go back and put this back on bargaining, then what I continuously have heard from our principals is, they've got to be ready to start staffing and planning for their schools for next year. So as a board, then, we've got to be in a position then to say that there is no cuts that we're going to be making at this moment, there is no changes to the staffing plan than, or that we are approving the staffing plan basically as was presented previously.
In April.
In April. And that, so that they can go back and start going to work and to plan for next year, and then whatever savings, or whatever cost of that, I think we have to be prepared that it comes out of reserve until we get through a bargaining process. And I just am saying, that's, I think, the realistic scenario that we are in.
Yeah, I get that one point. Go ahead. As I showed you last, two weeks ago, if we didn't make that one million dollar cut, we would be into, under the fund balance policy that presented, I mean, if we don't. Correct.
Yeah, I'm willing to take that risk right now, because I think, I think we have the ability, I mean, that's what I'm saying, looking at all this money that we have potentially to work with, I, I think we could get close to that. The other thing is, and I know the principals are here to answer our questions, and I, and we've gotten some phone calls from the principals that we're very concerned that we didn't listen to you all in your recommendation to cut the media specialist. And I want to tell you all here, from me, just me, I don't know if my other board members agree with me or not, but that directive to cut your staff did not come from the school board, and we haven't had that discussion. You all already made the decision based on what you were told to cut a position. So we did not listen to you, we didn't, the cutting of the position, in my opinion, was something that should have come out of this discussion. And the fact that you all are upset with us for not listening, I don't agree necessarily that, that you should have had a position to cut. So that's why I'm kind of taking a step backwards. So it's not that we didn't listen to you, maybe we didn't even agree that the position should have been cut from your school. So I want you to understand, it's not that we're here saying, we, we know better about your school. That conversation didn't take place yet, so that's why I want you to understand that. So if you're here to defend your position, I don't think you have to.
We did not make a decision to cut.
No. We didn't know about it. We didn't know about it. You knew about it before we knew about it.
They knew about, they knew about that decision, because we met with all the middle school and elementary principals and said, we feel like that you're probably going to lose a unit next year so we can meet our budget. And they had discussions among themselves, the elementary world and the middle school world, and they felt like that the position, the instructional position they would give up for this year was media specialist. So at that point, I felt like that that was a good conversation that we could bring back to the board to say, because we knew the question would be, can they live without it? Because usually we say, you've got to lose this, what can you live without, and what you cannot live without. So it's kind of like, is the cart for the horse, or the other way around. But I always believed that I need to have a conversation with principals to bring back to you all, because, be able to answer your questions.
I think, absolutely. If it was a unit, what unit, if you had, if you had the same money, what unit would you cut? Excuse me, and as I heard, all the, not say all, the majority of principals said, the media specialist unit would be the one, although we want to have them, that we would focus on them, that we would cut if forced to cut a unit, and that's what I heard.
But we didn't, but this, but it didn't, the school board did not...
Did not come from us.
Didn't come from us, and we weren't part of that decision to cut a unit at your school. We weren't, because that was not a discussion between April, when we had the workshop, there was no discussion about cutting a unit, and May, when we had a staffing plan that had your unit already cut. So I'm a little resentful of the fact that people are blaming us, and that media specialists have come to us, asking us to preserve their jobs, thinking maybe that this was our decision to cut their positions. And the principals being angry at us that we didn't listen to your recommendation. And what we're saying is, we weren't involved in, in any of the recommendations to cut a position at your school. So it's not that we didn't listen to you, we might have even agreed that a position should have been cut, whatever the position was. I don't think you voluntarily said, you know what, I have extra people at my school, I'm just gonna give them up if you don't mind. I mean, did that happen? Okay.
And we're not upset with you, so I don't know where that's...
Well, maybe you personally aren't, but some of your colleagues aren't, and they've made it clear to us. Can I, can I come up to the podium?
Please.
Yes.
I'm Trish Douglas, and I just want to talk a little bit about a couple of your comments. First of all, I was on the original budget committee, I believe it was two years ago, so I, I represented the middle school world. And the media specialist was one thing among many, as well as TOSES, deans, marine science station, there were so many things we discussed. And when we met again this year, and at the end of last year, we've always discussed items that we would not want to ever discuss, but when we talk about media specialist specifically, of course, we don't want to do without them. We, but we have to make a decision that's best for our school, and the decision that least impacts our students. We didn't even talk about the school board being involved in that decision, so I just want to make it clear that we would never be upset with you all. You, you weren't in the discussion, actually, so I just wanted to state that.
And the reason they're not, you all aren't in that discussion is because if I can't come to you and say that I met with the elementary, middle school principals or high school principals, you all are gonna turn to us and say, well, what do the principals think? So, you know, do we, we knew that we were surprised with $1.3 million increase in our budget at the midnight hour when the session closed. We knew that we need to do something with our budget, so that's why we called the meeting with the principals, I think, the very next day, and had them come in here and talk about an instructional unit, because we knew that if we bring some recommendations to the board, I mean, I felt like we needed to recommend something to the board, and we needed their input to do that. I'm not the one to sit here and tell all of our principals, you're gonna do without this specific position. They run the schools, we put them as their leaders, they're the ones that need to tell me and the school board what they can live without.
And I understood it was an open-ended question, you know, what can you do, what can you do without?
Yes.
And your answer was, this is what we can do without. We can make...
We can make it work.
We can make it work. Right.
Because, Mrs. Powers, we looked at the whole list. We looked at that list that you guys just went over, as a group of middle school principals at the beginning of this year. When we talked about it last year, after this committee got together and came up with all the recommendations. But then we looked at this list again, again, that Trish was talking about, and we actually went through and said, we, I mean, I had my sheet in the car, we talked about, we coded, what can we live without, what can we not live without, and what are we need to run on? And we went through that whole list, the four middle school principals together, and that's how we came up with some of these things, the media specialist happened to be one.
And sometimes we don't know all of that, and we're going, what happened? And, but with the knowledge of it, then we understand.
What kind of conversations did you have with your media specialist?
I talked with our media specialist as soon as we received word that, you know, we had talked about the possibility of media specialist going back in the classroom. Our media specialist has been in her role one year. She teaches for half the day, she teaches reading, and I told her that it could be a possibility that she may be teaching full-time next year. I told her that we'd do whatever we could do to keep her active in the media center, and I would keep posted on what decisions would be made about the budget as a whole.
Basically, the same thing. I mean, I started talking to ours two years ago, and it was first to get on the list. And just talking to her, and she, she's been, she's in a very different scenario, because she's been in the, at last year, it was 28 years. So, and she's always been a media specialist, and she's not certified in any other area. So I've been talking to her for two years about, what are some, you know, what are your interests? You know, since you run the media center, I would think reading would be your interest. I've talked to her about getting her reading endorsement, I've talked to her about doing language arts certification. So I've been having conversations with her two years, knowing that this would be a possibility if things didn't get better.
And has she gotten herself ready?
No. But, we've had many, many conversations over the two years. I would say last year, we probably talked on a weekly basis, and this year, very frequent conversations, just about the same thing, about what's Plan B, what are you gonna, you know, just trying to lead her in the direction of finding something to get certified, and knowing that this very well could happen if the budget's taken bad.
One of the things that, and I concur with my fellow board members, that, that we have a lot of items on here. I kind of added, I wasn't quite as high as you, misjudgment, but I came up with about $2.8 million in roughly partial or contractionally obligating, you know, costs that we can do. And again, it varies because of the different things. But, there is about $2.8 million. In January, we still kind of had that list. And what we've said, and I think we've talked about this in the public, I think we've had this list, this will be maybe the fourth or fifth time that our board has looked at this list. And we've generally said each time, we're not interested in those cuts. At the same time, the challenge that we've had is, before legislative session, we knew we were still facing about $1 to $2 million in underfunding, or in additional costs that we're gonna have. We probably should have put, had that discussion about with bargaining at that time. Now, I still don't say just because we didn't have it then, doesn't mean we still shouldn't be having it. So I don't want to imply that that isn't the case. But that's January, now we're in May, and the problem is, we still don't have any money taken out of the budget. We've talked about, we have talked about reducing the high school staff, by modifying that schedule. And I want to make this clear too, you know, as far as the block, this board has generally said, we are supportive of the block, we have been flexible to continue to say, let's make sure we are meeting all our students' needs. And so that's why we have had some flexing within that block schedule. I think teachers have, to some extent, at the high school level, stepped up and said, we're willing to modify how we teach in order to save funds. That's gonna save us over a half a million dollars this coming year, if we agree to that. So, I was, while I was certainly not expecting us to have the media conversation this year, there is still a conversation of, are we doing anything else, or is that the only thing on the table for cuts? Because at this point, what I'm hearing is, that's maybe the only thing, I mean, there may be a few things in here. Swimming, I will tell you, this board knows how I feel about swimming, but I can't take a program out of a classroom at this point to support a swim program that, while I know has a benefit, I'm gonna lose a staff member, maybe two aides, in order to do that. I can't do that right now. So, those are those things, I'm willing to have those conversations. But if, other than a few of those things, maybe some deans and other ones, we haven't, the biggest item that we've talked about, that we have been willing to do in the staffing plan, has been the high school. So, that, now that's a big number right there, but I kind of, while I didn't like the way the timing was about the media, I didn't know that it wasn't trying to have some equitability to say, three high schools are gonna lose 11 teachers.
There's also a reduction in FTE. I think it wasn't the 11 based on FTE.
It was a combination, nine, it was FTE, eleven, it was the research.
Yeah, it was 20 total, with FTE count.
So, but 11 is just based on the reorganization of that.
Which just means that they'll have a few more kids in their classes.
Second semester.
Probably second semester. They haven't lost any positions as far as classes or programs or anything like that. So there's been real negative impact, I don't think, for the students. And we'll get the feedback from the teachers at the vice school, I'm quite sure.
And that's a great point, because it is, it is somewhat benign as far as there is no cut in programs or resources after that. So, but at this point, we do, we do have that, we do have some other ones. I do wish we had talked about going to the bargaining before today. I still think that that's something we should put on them. I think it does, it makes it a lot easier for us to then have a conversation about cuts. When we've done that, I'm just not sure that this doesn't mean we still don't need to make some cuts today. That may mean that we still go back to our old rule of, we want to make cuts that don't affect core systems in our schools.
I don't know why we cut anybody until we know how much money we really are dealing with, and how much our budget needs to be cut. That's what I'm saying, this really needs to be put in the hands of our negotiating team ASAP, before we make decisions about eliminating positions. Because I would tell you this, the money is never gonna get any better. It might get slightly better, but then they take more money out of your other department. It's like pickpocketing. You get this, and then it's gone.
Or they categorize it.
Yeah. So I mean, you eliminate a position, it's gonna be a real hard battle to get it back. And from what I'm hearing from some of the schools, the media specialists at some schools are, I don't wanna say more valuable than others, but they might have different kinds of roles and responsibilities. They might have, one, at one school's being used completely different than the other. So I think, the fact that a media specialist at one school's different than a media specialist at another school, why are we cutting them all then? If they're all doing their own jobs, they're not all the same. So that whole, you know, we're all, we all want to do the same thing, doesn't, if you follow it through, it doesn't come up to the same repercussion, I guess I should say, for your school, will be different. So I think that's something, you know, if the media specialists are doing different jobs in different schools, maybe we need to look at the job descriptions. Maybe we need to give the schools a flex position. You figure it out. You want to use this person in that way? I'm gonna tell you how to use his position, but I don't necessarily mean that you should have less than what you have right now.
And we did that, I mean, I should say, we, that was before my time, but this board did support doing that when it came to curriculum into a TOSA position. You know, Pasco County has kind of done that very thing, by basically calling it a super specialist, and in many cases, that was their media specialist that's gonna apply and get those jobs. In other cases, it may be a different role.
And the technology, I mean, charging of technology, especially with this one-on-one, you know, as we see at Central Springs Middle School, it requires more hands-on work. I mean, technology doesn't save people time. Technology really creates, or more people, really.
And that is what people forget, that it does save...
Yeah, it's crazy.
But it also, as we know, is what principals have told us, and we've seen at Central Springs, it also means that they need to have a professional development person that also helps those teachers in assembling those lessons and putting that together.
And maybe a flex position could be someone who does that.
Right. I concur.
You know, developing instructional materials through technology, maybe that's what the media specialist becomes.
Essentially, each classroom teacher's gonna maybe become a specialist in the future.
But you all talk about flexibility.
You're absolutely right. Ow! I'm so proud of you guys. You've grown so much as a board.
When we looked at the staffing plan, and you look at different positions where, you talk about 196 days, or if they've got 201 days, we also had a discussion that we're gonna bring to you, that maybe every instructional position, whether it's guidance, the TOSA, the media, whatever, put every one of them on the staffing plan as a 196 contract person. Give each school X amount of days. And at the principals, because at the high school, maybe the assessment specialist this year needs more days than the guidance, I don't know that answer, but maybe give them, the principal, the flexibility, you know, if you want to talk about flexible positions, or at least flexible part in the days, on who gets X amount of days, and give them a total number of days per school.
I think you're very right. We have to listen, I feel, to the principals. People run the schools. We shouldn't be setting a third guessing them. If they need a person, an extra guidance counselor, extra whatever, they know it. We don't, we're not there every day. So we need to listen very carefully.
And what I hear, and both of you are perfect examples of that, is that some of this is evolving with common core, with one-to-one. And I don't know that all the answers are known today exactly what some of those positions are going to look like and be and when. And each school is gonna have different strengths to pull from, I mean, with TOSSAs. Some TOSSAs lean more towards curriculum and professional development, and other ones have some administrative responsibilities and different, and the beauty of that is there's some autonomy that each of those schools have. And I think that, to me, is that same support.
The Sorench has a negotiation set up for the 30th, so if you all would like to go into executive session, if you do that.
All right, I need to ask about the principals. Do we want the principals?
If the board feels like that they've received enough answers, that they can head that way.
But I do want you to know, I think it was really good that you came to tell us. It was great that you didn't have to let Jeff Davis, is he still in the room?
He left.
Give him a hard time. That we didn't have to hear from him, because we always hear from him.
I have a question for Mrs. Newman though, because you're at La Canto High School. Mr. Bitner's been very gracious in supplying me a very long, his body, Tommy, extra units really are necessary for IB. And I don't know, somewhere it's between one and three, and then, oh, there was another one, so I'm not sure what we came up with. But I don't think, surely, it's six additional units, over and above what you would have had for the same number of students. Is that correct?
You're correct, and I've read all of Mr. Bitner's emails.
Okay.
One was very long. When we look at our IB program, we really have to look at the A-Day, B-Day schedule, and I think Mr. Bitner explained that pretty well. And one of the questions was, why don't we just go completely A-Day, B-Day? Well, we really can't, because we have two sister schools that don't do an A-Day, B-Day. We have such an issue with transient students going back and forth, we definitely would affect their ability to get their credits on time. So we have to keep our convoluted, very different schedule, A-Day, B-Day, four-by-four, all-year classes. With that, it does create schedules where teachers on A-Day, B-Day have very small classes. For our IB, our average is 18 to 1. For our PIBs, it's 22 to 1. Without the PIBs program though, we can't have the success we have in the IB program, so they really do flow together.
But the PIBs is the, they're on four-by-four like all the rest of the students.
No ma'am, they're not. They're on A-Day, B-Day, except for two classes.
Ninth and 10th grader?
Yes ma'am.
Oh, you didn't explain that part.
Yes, they are. So we really are at that 22 to 1 with our PIBs program, because we haven't maintained 100 students in any one of the grade levels. I think next year, our sophomore class will be 88, our junior class is 76, our senior class is 58, our freshman class will be 95. So when you look at A-Day, B-Day, we at times, and I think Derek explained this quite well, have teachers, and this year we have four, next year we'll have four, that also have an extra planning in there. So that also adds to the staffing issue. So when I go through all of it, and we can look at all the numbers, we really do need about four units, maybe four and a half, to maintain the integrity of the entire program. With that, we also have 95 more students than anyone else will, so that's another approximately four units. And I think we've ended up with about 7.5 different, so we're really understaffed by at least half a unit.
Well, I think they redo, did they redo the chart? Okay, we'll look at the chart again.
Yes ma'am.
So, well, even, what about even having more classes on A-Day, B-Day for maybe juniors and seniors, or those upper-level classes? Does that help at all?
We actually run about another 300 students on A-Day, B-Day.
Okay.
With our honors programs, AP programs. In Avid, I run multiple A-Day, B-Days also, only when though, they're cost-effective, so I look at that every year. So we don't run into the same 22 to 1 ratio, we're running at a 24, 25 to 1 ratio in those A-Day, B-Days.
I thought that was 25?
Yes ma'am.
Okay.
In cores.
And Sean might want to add to this, but La Canto High School does an A-B Day for math and English.
Yes ma'am.
And that requires probably one or two extra units, but I don't want to say we've allowed them, because we know it's more additional staff, because in the meantime, for the last, they did it last year and the year before. So Mr. Simon, in the meantime, is pulling up all the data on math scores and English scores to see if it makes a big impact, or if there is a difference. So, that's the other reason that you may see them put one or two extra.
Yeah, because we talked it in the high school directions committee, some of the schools were thinking that, instead of Algebra 1A, Algebra 1B is two credits, it's two blocks, having a single hour of what we call the skinnies, all year long, and then maybe...
That's a high word term, yes ma'am.
Yeah, find another class that they could have in parallel to that, so that they could have Algebra all year long, but doesn't require twice as much time and twice as many teaching units. And I think, and Citrus said their results were pretty similar to what you were seeing with your Algebra 1A, Algebra 1B. Was it Citrus? Were you there?
No.
Mr. Clotter?
I think the math, the Algebra, we're waiting on the second term, this, to really be able to get it clear.
Yeah. And we talked about using more of those flexibility in scheduling at the high school level to provide different schedules for kids based on their needs, not that everybody has to be on a four by four block forever, lasts every, all year long. And that they thought that might save units too, I don't know.
Just to give you one example, in Avid, our first year of Avid, three years ago, or two years ago, we ran an A-Day, B-Day with our Algebra class and our English class.
Okay.
At the end of that, our math teacher and English teacher felt like there had been, for the freshmen, it had been too difficult for them to switch back and forth. So this year, we ran it on four-by-four block. And you know what they asked me? Can we please go back to A-Day, B-Day? So next year, we're A-Day, B-Day again with that.
What about, what about...
Because it gives them depth.
What about splitting the block into two half-blocks, half is math and half is English, and then swapping the kids?
We've definitely looked at that, but right now, we're running three different schedules entirely, and to add a fourth, we're not gonna do that next year. And just one more piece on our math, we do run more 1A, 1B classes, and we've had tremendous success with that. For the two years that we can document it, our 1A, 1B teachers have averaged a 62, 63, 64 percent pass rate, which is well above the state average and dominates our county. And that's with our 1B students, that's not our Algebra. Our Algebra is at about a 95 to 86 percent pass rate.
Very good.
Just about the master schedule. Where the high schools are now, we have a formula, and that formula gives us a base of where we can start then with teachers, and they'll go back and they'll try to start building a master schedule from there. Once they start putting those periods into an actual format where there's a schedule, that's where conflicts start coming up, especially when you have single classes. I offer one chemistry honors, so everybody has to take chemistry honors second period. Well then, that may conflict with another advanced class that they want to take. So, that's where the schedule doesn't work out equally across the board, and that's when they'll have to come back to us and, "I need two more sections of this or I may be able to give up a section of that." So it's a work in progress. It's a living document that continually changes as the year goes on, and we keep tweaking it as the year goes on. If we can condense units during the year, we try to do that. Sometimes we have to add units during the year, but that staffing plan really is just a base figure that we get them started on their scheduling, and then from there, we will have to add and take away as best we can.
And Mr. Martin, just for clarification, we're talking about the instructional side of that staffing plan.
Correct.
Because I think what, and again, I'm speaking so that, because for the public and those that are watching, that the rest outside of that, we try to keep pure to that.
Absolutely.
It's only within that because we don't know the students have, you know, which ones we need to remediate, which ones we can advance and go to the next one.
That's another good one, I didn't even bring up that.
You know, those become, that you have to start, and that's why I know you're waiting for scores to be able to fully staff.
She thinks she knows how many sections of Algebra she needs.
But you're guessing a little bit at this point and saying where they're coming.
Absolutely. I base it on the average from the previous year and then look at the instruction that occurred this year and our CBAT and our formative assessments and see where we're at, and then we make the best guess possible.
And in fairness, middle school, I think faces and is facing more of some of that, especially now with civics and you have middle, I was just going to say, you guys have many high schools at each of, I know at each of your sites, because both of your sites have very successful Algebra 1 and geometry programs, so.
Okay, so are we ready to go into executive session?
Hold on everyone, one second. We're talking about the IB program with the success it has and the growth, which I know is phenomenal to other people in the state, when Mr. Bittner visits, we're just really going ASAP.
Yes ma'am.
Because of the success of the programs, that sometimes we get more challenges in being able to fit the number of students into the programs that are highly successful.
Yes ma'am. Just an example, three years ago, we had no AP science classes, now we have three. So, you know, it just, it just keeps growing.
Have you all explored the idea of doing webcasting to other schools? So if a student couldn't take chemistry honors, a second period, they can take a third period and there's a chemistry honors third period at Citrus or Christopher River that they could participate remotely?
Two years ago, we, with Citrus High School, did Italian with a teacher that was at our school, because they had lost their teacher and it's such a tough area to fill. And so when our teacher was teaching, she would also be teaching at Citrus High School. It was difficult with a foreign language though, because the teacher really needs to be able to hear the students, and it was challenging. Now, that's the only thing I can speak of that we have tried. I know our district has talked about many other options.
Would that count as a virtual class, Mr. Martin, do you think?
I don't believe so, because we do have...
Mr. Simon's behind there.
No.
But...
Would you have to reduce, I'm sorry, the class size for that student? I mean, that teacher? I mean, if that teacher had 26 students in the class...
Class size is still applicable.
And five at another school would be...
The teacher at that school would probably drop to less.
But, but Mr. Clutter and or Simon, generally though, I think, because I know, and I've agreed with Ms. Deitchman, that that's, those are some areas we want to explore. She's been asking that, I think we could structure though, so that we could actually have kind of inter-county virtual, a course that would meet the requirement for the virtual standard, but would also potentially, again, use resources that we have at one school and expand them to another.
Yeah, we've had a lot of conversations recently, one that's connected with Seminole County schools.
I would add where.
That we're exploring. One of the things is, that we've been talking about is, you just approved last, at the last meeting, the E2020 and the Play-Doh. Those are courses that we are actually purchasing for a certain number of licenses. But technically, a teacher in our county could actually teach that course virtually through those programs and then be able to get that on, and meet that online standard. But again, jumping into that, we'd be looking at those teachers and then setting up that. So we'd like to try and get started with that next year at some time, maybe not the first semester, but maybe the second semester. But those are the kind of conversations, but I'm glad Mrs. Newman kind of alluded to that, is that that was very challenging as far as that communication with the virtual in the visual sense.
But Seminole and E2020 would be able to, in essence, let us use their infrastructure, you know, to be able to do that, so that some of the challenges that we dealt with the way we did it ourselves wouldn't become its obstacles.
Yes, that's basically putting that curriculum together with the mode in order to be able to communicate with that student on a very regular basis.
But I think we are closer to what Ms. Deitchman's envisioning now than maybe ever of being able to do that.
And Mark, where does accountability fall there with a teacher?
It is on that teacher record. It is for the teacher that is listed as that virtual teacher, just like when we have Penn Foster, those teachers are the teacher record for that.
Okay, so if we had it here and broadcast it there, our teacher here would be accountable for the students there.
That's correct. Correct. So if it's a Citrus High School student, teacher that's teaching Christopher River, that teacher's responsible, yes.
Thank you, Mr. Clutter. Ms. Hamilton?
If we let the principals go back, do you all have any questions for Ms. Willis or for Paul Stubbett? Because I know that...
I don't understand the question.
Because I know we talked about aides, teacher aides, because she's got so many more, but I think you all understand, I just want to make sure more, because she's putting aides in each one of her classes. She want to address the aide program?
Yes, I have a plan to put in some aides in our CTE classrooms, because as many of you know, WTI was built and most of the building was in 1968, and for whatever reason, they put classrooms at a higher level than the lab. So the visibility, the supervision, the safety is my main concern. So in other words, if you're in the auto body shop, your classroom is up here, your shop is here, and your paint booth is still further out. And I've got one teacher supervising those areas. Same thing goes in the electrical wiring class, same thing for the auto service class. Those are on the same level, but when the teacher's out in the shop, he still has a classroom full of students, because it's all competency-based, students are at different levels. There needs to be supervision.
And they'll all be funded up.
All, yes.
I was wondering that too, because I've visited several times, I kept thinking, "I must be missing the teacher who's out there."
Yes.
There's none, right?
It's not just the layout, but we, there's always going to be students at different stages in the vocational program, so there's always going to be class activities at the same time there are shop activities.
Yes.
And we should have somebody going to help there.
Even if they're in the paint booth, they're kind of, I mean, you're going to have to close it and...
It's out there.
Yeah.
Yes. And I also, you know, we serve the public in cosmetology, in the cafeteria, and I have to have collection, people collecting money for those programs.
And reporting it.
And reporting it.
And turning it in.
You got that, yes ma'am.
Without exception.
Correct.
We've done that every year.
Correct.
And they say, "We never do it." Right, we never do it right, 100%.